It's now 5:00 p.m. and the August 1st, 2022 special council meeting will come to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance for the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Patty, would you please call it over?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Zabel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Interim City Manager Kyle Reeffler.
Here.
City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
And Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Here.
Thank you Patty. We have one item on the agenda which is to discuss contract negotiation parameters with City Manager Candidate Ken C. Griffin. In the last meeting Vice Mayor Gunn volunteered to work on a list of initial expectations and methods of tracking progress. I'm going to hand it right over to Vice Mayor Gunn.
Thank you. Trying to mail this out but ran into some difficulties there. Talk about that later on. I had hoped that everybody would have been able to go to, back to their evaluations of their prior city manager because obviously we can't do it now but it would be nice for everybody to go back and look at the goals and objectives they set forth for the next evaluation period for Lynn Reeves. Some of the, as background, I think we're all pretty much in agreement that we're likely to exceed the projected budget for a new city manager. Therefore, I think it's incumbent upon us and a good justification to look at obtaining some sort of satisfactory return on our future investments. So with this goal in mind, I propose that the council consider some of the below expectations. Objectives and I just, this is just a random beat that I pulled off kind of in the vein of how the federal government runs. Within the first hundred days of employment, the new Beller Beach City Manager shall report back to the city council regarding a plan of action for the following areas. And I don't mean, when I say a plan of action, I don't mean a discreet detailed, a plan of how he's going to do it but give us just a rough overview of what he's looking at, thinking about, going through his head, and a cursory review of what he's seeing and some recommendations. Number one at the top of the list is establish and implement a structured grant policy or process. This process should proactively seek alternative or supplemental funding for any future or existing Beller Beach initiative, project, or acquisition. Although primarily focused on capital assets and infrastructure projects, this process should not be limited in scope. The goal shall be to maximize any available non-city funding wherever it's possible. As a minimum, this Beller Beach grant policy shall, number one, designate a grant process owner. I want to know who owns the process and the policy of seeking out grants for the city of Beller Beach. Number two, outline a method for evaluating and tracking grant applications for integration with the capital improvement plan and the budget processes. This needs to be a proactive program, not just a matter of waiting for something to fall into our laps. It's time to get out there and actively look for and seek out any and all grants that might apply to projects that we need. Number two, develop and integrate a city of Beller Beach dashboard or scorecard. It should consist of a handful of intuitive and easily comprehensible metrics that communicate the status and health of Beller Beach to the council and our residents. Areas of interest would be the strategic plan goals such as the budget, the capital improvement plan, and code enforcement. Number three, review and update the city of Beller Beach personnel policy to ensure that personnel staffing, organization, job descriptions, responsibilities, evaluations, and accountability all accurately align with the existing conditions. Number four, review the capital improvement plan and provide recommendations regarding improvements to better prioritize, accelerate, or reduce costs. Number five, continue to embrace technology wherever feasible. The goal is to streamline and improve communication with the council and our residents. Timely, thorough, proactive, and transparent communication with the council cannot be overemphasized. Last, continue progress for improving goal, boulevard, and aesthetics and resiliency. This includes undergrounding of utilities, improved lighting, and measures to reduce traffic congestion.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Jody Shirley. What would you, what would you add to this? And do you have some basic ideas that you think would qualify the new city manager and keep him in control?
Glenn had, I wish I'd had this prior to now. Would have been very nice. But Glenn had--
Let me hold you there, right there for one second. I don't want to get into sunshine rules and all of that in this meeting. So let's just pretend like this is your first opportunity to see this. And then in the next meeting at the end, I will, or during the city attorney comments, I will ask Randy to address this, okay?
No, I mean it would definitely be nice to have had something to look at but, but either way, I think Glenn did it. He highlighted many of the areas. Hundred days is a generous amount of time to give him time to pull this together. I think that possibly could be shortened if we got a high-powered executive that we think we've hired. Then this, that time I think could be shortened so we can see what is, or maybe shorten timelines at some specific points so we can see what we're dealing with and know right at the beginning whether or not we've made the right choice. But if we're following the strategic plan and focusing on many of those goals that are listed in there, we know that the employment evaluations and job descriptions are kind of a key point. Some of them don't really align with what our staff's doing. I can see the reason for each one of these objectives and I think it's a great list to start with.
Thank you. One of the, one of the things that I noticed about this particular set of objectives, a hundred days of employment, you generally know within that first three months who you've got. We've all dealt with people that sold, sold us a certain type of work ethic and then they didn't deliver and then they had to be addressed. So one thing that I would definitely like to see following this outline is we sit down with the city manager and develop some realistic goals that are attainable. We know that they can be done but definitely something to show off the talent that we've been sold. Mike Zabel.
Okay, basically from my experience, what I've seen here, I like absolutely. The hundred days is really not a factor to me. First of all, they serve at our pleasure. I mean, at day one, we don't like it, it can be gone. But monthly, every month, we receive a formal report from the city manager. It doesn't take much for one of us to ask, "Hey, how you doing on the dashboard? How you doing on this?" Second, most of us are in contact with city hall at least, you know, two, three, five times a week and frequently over here. It's not a major mystery to us. Nothing should be ever a surprise because we're talking to them. They're not going on for a hundred days in a small cabinet somewhere. You know, we will know what they're doing. It's constant feedback. So the idea of, you know, is a hundred days too short? Don't get fixated on it. Look, we got monthly formal reports and we're in contact daily. So what we have here is a good structure. Yes, I would like some of the city manager's feedback because, you know, this is basically a contract and we want to make sure that we have properly positioned them for success. You know, just like we do with each other or with any new hire or even with our bosses. We try to set up our bosses for success by agreeing on a good set of ground rules and expectations to be conquered over the next three months, four months, year. You know, go back to that strategic document. Not only is it a hundred days, but talk to them about, "Look, how are we going to integrate this into the strategic plan? Where do we want to see you in three months, six months, a year, three years?" That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Notaro.
Yeah, the one that sticks out to me most is the, the grant policy and progress. And as I'm assuming you all get the Quality Cities magazine, and in here I notice that the Florida Cities has, Florida League of Cities has a grants assistance program. They have over 9,000 tracked grants that you can do, which I, I did not know about, but I think that could be a big help to our entire city staff, so.
Especially whenever the candidate sells himself with that talent. That's one of the things that attracted me to him was that he believes he can get us some grants that we have missed.
Lloyd.
Yes, first of all, I think Glenn did a great job. In my opinion, the background section really isn't necessary at all. I would expect all of these objectives to be pursued by whatever the salary is of a new city manager. That doesn't really matter in my opinion. All of these things, we should be conveying to the new city manager, again, whatever the salary is. So in my opinion, I would remove that because it's kind of implying the only reason we want them to do these particular objectives is because we feel like we're paying outside the boundaries. I don't think we should be conveying that message. These are just things that we think are important and we want the city manager to pursue.
I'm just, I'm going to throw this out there, probably get you to it, but at least the last two terms that I'm for sure, the council has been emphatic about trying to get grants and trying to push the city manager to get grants. And we've always been told that there's none out there. So it's, it's not like we didn't try. It just, we didn't, there were no, there was no fruit that came from it. So, Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really totally confused on this whole process that we've gone into. Back in March, I made a proposal that we give the interim city manager the job. See how it works out. One council member just said tonight, "If this guy doesn't work out, we can release him." He is an out-of-bought employee with very little, you know, demand on litigation and everything else. The other thing is, we did numerous workshops and I never, I reviewed some of these workshops. I never saw us exceed the $110,000 mark that was in the market. That said, what kind of disservice did we do to the 28 or 27 other candidates that applied? And did--
Councilmember Baker, I'm, I'm gonna have to call a point more because this has already been decided and we're now into the negotiation phase. That's the purpose of this meeting. So please, try to stay on topic and let's not, let's not go backwards.
Well, I am on topic. I mean, I, I don't really point orders out right now. The city attorney can judge that because I'm still on the topic of hiring and in the negotiation phase. And as one council person said at the last meeting, "Are we just negotiating?" I don't want to plagiarize it, but because it's the last man standing. This, this is just confusing. We're bringing this guy on because of the grants. He believes he can get us. What Pandora box do we open when you take a public grant? We like this nice little secluded city that we have. So what kind of Pandora box do we open if we take a grant and have to let a lot of public access in? I believe that this, this whole thing should be tabled. It should be reworked and it should go back to an employment search for a city council manager that we're willing to pay $140,000 plus for and publicize that figure. I think we did a lot better, Ken.
Thank you very much for those comments. All right, so, yes, Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to add for Lloyd's benefit that the background is just an introductory for, actually our, just our sake, that's all. Just making sure it brings us on the same page why we're doing this. The objectives are really the only thing we're going to need that we can go through.
All right, so what we've got here is we've sort of have a template that Vice Mayor Gunn has set up for us. The goal tonight is to give the city attorney some direction on what the council would like to do, what parameters he needs to have to go into negotiations with, with Ken Griffin. So we have already discussed salary. Let's bring that up again. I did not want to bring it up either tonight. And so now that Councilmember Baker has brought it up, let's just continue on with that. Councilmember Baker, let's hear your comments on, on the salary range beyond what you just said.
I believe that we should stick to our blueprint format that we agree, all agreed on. I believe, I'm not gonna mention their names, but some council members say we will not exceed 110. Let's offer him the $110,000. If he produces some type of grants that's not going to impact our city, lose our seclusion and way of life we accustomed to, we can voice up his salary another 20 to 40,000 if he produces what he says he can reduce, which I don't believe, Ken.
Thank you very much. I think, I think before we actually go straight into salary, we need to define what that is. What is the salary? Is it, is it combined? Is it several things? Is it just the, the gross pay and nothing more? What, what is the salary package? So I'll go to Leslie Notaro now.
Last week, we were talking with Mr. Griffin. I, it's, I think someone was saying, you know, "We can pay him more because we aren't going to have to hire outside engineering firms." We're not hiring an engineer. We're hiring a city manager. And I think it's better for the city if we have some sort of needed engineering consultant or building an outside engineering firm. There are lots of reasons for that. We're not hiring an engineer. We're hiring a city manager. So I think the 110,000 is a more appropriate place.
Thank you very much. Lloyd Roberts.
Yeah, response to Frank's response. I know we had conversations regarding, for example, posting the salary range. And I remember Vice Mayor Glenn talking about, and we had some conversations about this, that we don't really want to do that, which I thought was made sense, because we want to leave the opportunity based on the skill sets and talents of a potential city manager that we may want to go over and above what we could possibly print. And that might cause a challenge. So I know we had conversations about that where we weren't going to hold any magical number like 110 or 115,000. We were simply going to base the salary offer based on the skill sets and background and talents that the new city manager may bring to the table. So I thought that was an important point at that time and that, that's what we kind of decided to go with, which is why we were not going to put in the job advertisement what the minimum and maximum was. So that's what I recall.
You're correct.
Can I add to that? On the minutes we're approving, June 30th, we had a motion that was made by Councilmember Zabel that we would put a salary cap, second amendment by Baker, a salary cap of 123,000. That failed in vote with the council. No one agreed to put a cap on us. So we agreed to move forward because we didn't want to hand-high ourselves with the salary cap.
Thank you for reminding us. Would anyone else like to comment on that?
Mike, go ahead.
Okay. I gotta really draw your finger back here. First of all, 140K, I don't want to insult some people out there, frankly, it's kind of low. I mean, hell myself, I'm over 60K over that thing. You need to take a look at all the average salaries of top six people. That number was 133,666. That is the average of all top six people that we reviewed. So you're already starting in that area. Next, I've identified 20,000 savings from stopping the accounting software. Next, some of the council pushed through, kind of at the last minute, a stipend for the acting city manager, 24,000 a year. And that was done really without even looking, you know, hard at the budget. So that's there. Frankly, you start adding all that together, you got the money. And the same holds true for any position in this country. Look, if you're worth it, you can go elsewhere. You're gonna have to pay for this. Yeah, it sounds kind of callous coming from a city, you know, council member, but I'm a citizen as well. I want the best for this city. And that meant going through the due diligence for over, you know, two, three months, listening to the citizens, listening to the candidates, reviewing their qualifications. And that's where we're at. You can get a solid performer, yeah, it's gonna be 140, I would vote to approve that. Or you can throw it to the winds and take your chances. Frankly, your chances are not good. When you talk about headhunters, I went through most of the hiring, you know, practices throughout Florida when I was reviewing this. And you start seeing the same candidates over and over again. There's a limited amount of them. But you have a large number of people that believe that they're qualified. So you'll start seeing them show up all through the state applying for the city manager position. Hell, down the street, it's 135K. So getting the headhunter, it's not going to get you anything that we haven't seen. So again, I found the savings. It's there. And I'd vote to approve 140K for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gunn.
My thoughts are kind of along the same lines. I, I think we looked at salaries and we sliced and diced it three different ways and came up with what we thought was a target. And that's, that's what it was. It was just a target. It was just to give us a parameter and a starting place. What we're looking for is a particular set of skills because I think we have some requirements and some goals and objectives we're trying to get to. And I think you're going to have to pay them. And I think we're taking a realistic appraisal. A valid works. And I'm not about to settle just because the original target was in a certain parameter. I think we're looking for a skill set to take this city of Beller Beach to the next level.
Thank you very much.
Can I just add? Because I'm not clear on the 140. Cut it back to what you said, Mayor. Does that include any benefits? Is he looking for us to cover 100% of medical? You know, what, I, I don't know what that, what the expectations are and I'm not sure if anyone else does. So has, has our attorney had any conversation with them during the negotiations? Where are we at?
We've not had substantive negotiations as I was waiting, awaiting direction from my client this evening on substantive terms so that I wasn't suggesting that something is, "Oh, that's an obvious, yeah, for sure." And my client said, "That's not." But I went to, that's, that's it.
That, that's why I brought it up. I want to see hardened documentation, W-2 or some paid stuff broken down. So we're apples to apples on this. And we all understand we've got a level playing field and all the work ahead.
So we did all agree on that. We wanted to see his--
I can, I can ask if he's willing to share an employment agreement or W-2 or other documents with the caveat that any document he provides would be a public record once provided to the, to the city. And so he may be circumspect in what he's willing to provide in that regard. I, I've not had that conversation with the candidate.
Okay. I don't, if we have, on there, you're gonna see social security numbers and things like that. If it becomes a public record, can you redact any?
You can redact a social security number up to a certain point, but there's other, other content that he may not wish to have in the public sphere that wouldn't be a public record depending on, and I can't speak to what that is because I don't have the document in front of me. But people's sensibilities of what should be in the public sphere versus what is what's provided to a public entity or not, I always wanted to say.
All right, thank you. And as far as benefits go, Mr. Reeffler, can I ask you exactly what type of health insurance, benefits, et cetera, do you currently get? And are you just using the standard, a standard package that the city provides you or are you using something else?
I'm currently taking the opt-out that Lynn Reeves was taking as well. I get my insurance through my wife's work.
Okay.
It's, if you do opt-in, it's fully covered, blue cross, blue shield, paid for the employee. And there's a fee outside of that for any family members or dependents.
Right. If you also look through the budget, by the way, his total compensation package, the former city manager, was 144,485. That's after the 4.6% increase over last year's. Well, what he's not gonna do is ask what we paid for insurance. He's going to ask what type of coverage he's going to receive. Yes, sir. Mr. Goldman.
Mayor Lawton.
You have this discussion, you should have in front of you as a resource, the manager Reeves contract on page three of nine, going into page four of nine is what benefits he was entitled to under his agreement. Should that inform your discussion? There's some things in--
That's it. That's exactly what I was looking at. So he actually had a very nice compensation package. It looks like 100% of everything, long-term, health, dental. Yeah, a very attractive package and there would be substantial cost to this. But we were paying it before and although Lynn Reeves was a great manager, there were some things that were missing that I believe that if you did a parallel comparison, gave the new city manager the exact same compensation package with the exception of the salary increase. Our hopes are is that it would pay for itself. Yes.
Kyle, quick question. So when you stated that you, you and Lynn opted out, did you get anything in lieu of that? Did you make that choice?
Yeah.
What was that?
It was $600 a month. It's, it was, it's about $7,200 in here.
How much?
$7,200.
Okay, okay. And that was given to you via like your salary or just a separate? How, how was that paid?
It's just first every pay period.
Okay.
$300 per period. Well, unless you have three pay periods on, so the first two pay periods are $300.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Do I understand this, the way you're looking at your old contract is, it's kind of a template. It's something to make sure we check all the blocks, but I don't believe we're bound to the numbers or the percentages. I mean, for instance, healthcare, that sort of thing. I'm not, a, a company or a corporation or business doesn't pop into my mind that covers 100% of healthcare for employees. I mean, I'm kind of amazed, amazed at that number and--
We're paying for it in our business and it's not cheap.
Well, and I'm just saying typically, an employee has some sort of copay or something. It's prorated. I'm just not aware of it. So it's, that's something especially for a, a, a public employee who at this pay level, I mean, there's a give and take in some of this stuff.
Yeah, I feel like that there is some, some burden on the, on the side of the employee. But it still seems that the employer pays the majority of it.
Oh, that's interesting.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Um, you really got to look at the whole package, we're just kind of going over the numbers here. Let me give you some interesting things. First of all, everybody has been talking about, what is this salary? First of all, it started at, uh, we'll stipulate a hundred and six thousand dollars a year. That's salary wages. Now, retirements, he had two interesting retirement accounts. First one, it's called a four fifty-seven, we're putting five thousand, so he's getting that into his retirement account. But he had another retirement account, ten thousand dollars a year in advanced retirement contribution. So right now, we're talking one sixteen, we're at one twenty-one in terms of cash. Plus, you add in the car allowance, thirty-six hundred. So we're almost, you know, going up to one thirty here already, and that's direct. I mean, I'm telling you, if you're, if you're navigating the package for this man, look, start at one forty K, max, to include partial, you know, out of that, start subtracting, uh, car allowance, you know, thirty-six if you want. And you can play either way, it's a tax advantage for him possibly, look, one forty cash or one thirty-seven plus three K. Um, as far as retirement, we, you know, when you're paying fifteen thousand a year in somebody's retirement, that's an awful lot of money. You could sell that year off. Um, that could be moved around. And obviously, I would ask, because we can't say anything about spousal employment, but some spousal employment comes with health benefits. I know, you know, mine does. So I don't pay my health insurance, just taking care of my spouse. Um, these are some of the things, like I said, we're not comparing one forty with one oh-six. Oh, heck no. These numbers are a lot closer than what you think. You know, don't, you know, I hear people, oh, we have four, one forty over one oh-six, but no, it's not. It's much closer to one thirty, one forty right now, as it stands, looking at that compensation for the former city manager.
Thank you very much. I need to go to Frank Baker.
Yeah, just, just for point of information, um, Councilmember Shirley said about the June meeting, about my going with Mike Zabel on the one twenty-three, that was because we wanted to keep it below that level. That's why it failed, if you listen to the audio. But that was also the meeting, I believe they used the term Beller Beach is the Mayberry. Uh, and we could get a guy coming in here, like Mr. Reeves, he was probably on at least two pensions before he took this job. Uh, but he didn't need a lot of money. But I believe Mr. Griffin's salary, not counting benefits, is one hundred and forty thousand dollars. Plus, he also stated he sees at least fifteen thousand bonuses. If his coverage is with, uh, Blue Cross, that then, it's prob, and his family is covered under it, it's probably another twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars additional. So now you're talking at least one sixty-five, um, plus the car allowance, pension. Now we're talking, probably we're close to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, and they're true figures. And just to say, I negotiated a lot of contracts, public, by state, where the employer picked up the medical coverage for the employee and his family. And that's the way it should be in a nerve.
Thank you.
Can I just add one thing, just a quick, very quick statement? Looking at Reeves' compensation package, we basically were paying him twenty-seven percent over his base salary. So just to kind of keep the round number, coverage sliced and diced, that's what we're paying. So, um, that's why I brought forth the question, what does that one hundred and forty include? What are they proposing to him?
Well, um, what he says was one hundred and forty, and it's, uh, it's not negotiable. And, uh, and as far as anything above and beyond that, I really don't know. That's where we need to decide what's a reasonable expectation on, on benefits. And, and then we put a cap on it and sent Randy on his way to, to make the call.
So I would propose that we give him the one hundred and forty, and the only benefit we offer him is medical coverage, nothing else.
To the extent I've had any discussions with the candidate, the only other thing that was raised was the customary contribution for registration with ICCMA, the, which is an annual registration cost. I'd say it's, I, I don't know the precise cost, but I believe it's between one and two thousand dollars. That was the only thing that we talked about at all, and there wasn't an insistence, just a, just sort of statement on what, what would we expect to see in the contract in terms of terms? He's like, oh, and that, you know, that tends to be there as well, and I recognize, and I affirm to him that I'm accustomed, I am accustomed to seeing that in manager contracts.
As far as ICCMA, I would expect that to be just standard cost of operating. Again, that's, uh, we, we all need continuing education of some sort, and it's paid for by the city. So I would have no problem with that at all.
Mayor?
Yes.
In, in the proposed budget for next year, we have twenty-three hundred dollars for memberships and publications and professional development, a thousand in the mayor's, or the city manager's budget, excuse me. So that is in the budget.
It's, it's in there.
So above and beyond the exclusive of the salary.
Okay, now, whenever you said medical, were you just holding it at medical? Or was it dental, or was it with a regular health plan?
I would propose medical benefits, period.
All medical benefits. And are we at one hundred percent? Are we doing more, less, I mean, not more, but less, or are giving him the same thing that Lynn has?
Whatever our standard medical plan is that we offer all of our employees. He would have an opportunity to enroll in that for himself.
Okay.
In that instance, it is customary in, in contracts to have that the manager shall receive benefits as provided for all employees in the personnel manual. If it's a term that you're looking to do that way, that would be, that's typically the clean way that's done.
Okay, great. Mr. Baker, is your hand raised, or is it just...
Yes. Yeah, just to clarify, I, I believe this is on the table, uh, we're just giving him the one hundred and forty, medical, no pension, no 401K, no car allowance, is that correct?
I believe that that was the starting, uh, that, that was the opening bid. Uh, yes, sir?
Yeah, I just want to clarify a couple of quick things. I know when I asked him about his bonus, that's the only thing I remember for certain, that he said, uh, I, I don't, would not use my bonus to be calculated at all. I also remember somebody asked him about the one hundred and forty thousand, about that being unacceptable. Would you be willing? I think Mr. Baker said, would you be willing to take something less? And his, his response was, um, that's non-negotiable. I think he said something like, I would prefer not to. That, that was his response. So, what I would like to see Randy do, and I have one-hundred percent confidence in his negotiating ability, I think if he starts discussing and talking with Mr. Griffin, I would simply ask him right off the bat, what are you looking for? And I wouldn't give him any yanks. And if you can get him to say, well, I'm, I'm solid with the one hundred and forty thousand, who knows? He may say something, you know, my wife, uh, with her particular, um, position that she has, she's got fabulous insurance. I'm not concerned about that at all. You just never know. So I, I wouldn't offer up anything at this point, and again, I have complete confidence in Randy. He knows what we've talked about. So that this probably could be and should be a little bit of a back and forth. Uh, you know, Randy comes back to us and says, I talked to him the first time, and this is where we are. What do you guys think? That type of thing. I wouldn't give up anything. I would, you know, hopefully, he'll say, well, I'm good with the one hundred and forty thousand, and I would prefer to have, or maybe that's it. Maybe he's good.
Vice Mayor.
I'm more of a, I, I think that's the starting point there. He's the one with the skills and services that he wants to sell, and...
What's the price, Mayor?
I think that's the starting point there, and that's where the negotiation starts.
I agree with that.
It, it's just that we need to establish some sort of a cap.
Right. And, and what I would say for you folks, I don't need, this is the exact number for this, this is the exact number for that. I am looking for guidance, not, not unlike if we were about to go into a mediation. And I said, you know, what, give me a range you're willing to, to settle in or work with. And tell me, at this number, Randy, walk away from the table. And so, I'm not talking about walking away from tables at this point. But what I am seeing, I'd like to avoid the necessity to come to you every single time we, we change a comm. Or, hey, actually, now he wants to add in a phone budget, and now we've got to have a whole special meeting about a phone. You know, I can go through and tell you things that are customary to see, and if, and if I see, if, if any of this strikes you, let me know. It is customary to see ICCMAs, which you've addressed. Um, whether there's any, what provision, if any, for technology or, or subsidization of technical, technological costs, uh, travel costs, radius, uh, gas, uh, gas or travel contributions on a monthly basis. Um, you'll, you also see the, well, we've already talked about membership, I'm sorry, uh, salary benefits. Also termination, which I think is an important thing to discuss. Um, termination and separation, not, not to, you know, put a damper on the, on the happiness of someone joining. But we also need to know, because they work in our quarter, what are their expectations, what are yours? Um, that's one thing that's come up in a lot of communities that I've seen as a deal, not a deal breaker, but a real deal changer. Will tell you that it's customary, because of the industry, that there be some kind of severance if it is not for cause. And for cause is very, very narrowly defined as you've been convicted of a crime or done something of great moral turpitude that we can establish or have good faith basis to believe happened. Not, for cause isn't, you came to this meeting, you said something I didn't like, and now I'm terminated for cause. Um, that's not how for cause tends to work in the sphere. Uh, but generally, okay, if they retire, if they resign, if things end amicably, what happens? And, and does it matter as to how far out that happens? Um, you know, if it's in the first year versus the third year, does that change anything for you? And so, that's the kind of stuff. I'm, I'm not looking for you to give me every penny and nickel, I just want to know if there's, hey, in looking at this agreement, I can tell you, for example, um, as I read it and I've skimmed it, so forgive me if I'm misreading it, um, your previous manager's contract provided for nearly a year's compensation on separation, I don't think that's, one, legally tenable. But, two, I, that's obviously not something we're going to replicate. Um, and so, how many weeks, if they're separated, you know, or not, how many weeks are you open to that up to a certain point? I just need general parameters, I, I want to make sure. I'd like to avoid coming back to you repeatedly. If I have a round to work with and I can say to him, hey, this is, this is where that conversation was tracking, we can fly that up the flagpole, great. Um, but I do want to avoid five and six workshops over this.
And there's nothing wrong with you contacting us individually just to get our opinion without sharing other people's opinions.
Correct, I can gauge, and I can gauge, yes.
All right. And, um, moving a comma is kind of extreme, so let's try not to do that. And then, the last comment that I had, uh, on, on this particular, where, where you're going with this is, I don't want someone that's going to come in and if it doesn't work out immediately, they get a big severance package. We need to make sure that that is not the case.
And I can structure something like that, and I, I've done that in other communities where we've said, if it's within the first year, it's this, and, you know, year two to three, it's that, so that there's not, there's, it's, you're not incentivized to do this. And, and with a note towards my comments, the last meeting on their ICCMA ethical obligations, which militate towards a two-year commitment at minimum when you're in the place, unless you are terminated by the council.
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm happy with that. Uh, other comments?
Can I say, I think it's not unreasonable to have a, a phone, for, to pay for a cell phone for him. I mean, I think that that's probably pretty standard with all of our city staff. I think we all expect him to be available.
I would gladly give mine.
But, you know, we want his availability, and, you know, without providing, I just think that's kind of hard. And, and maybe I'm out of bounds, I'm just kind of floating a couple of ideas.
No, that's, uh, that's perfectly acceptable. In fact, uh, he, he was the one that said, uh, whenever I asked him about getting phone calls at night, he said he slept with a cell phone. Uh, and one of the stipulations, uh, Randy, is that I would, I would want a firm commitment that this city would not be unmanned. If Kyle is out of town, someone is manning the city in the, in the event of an emergency. And if it winds up being the new city manager and he has to drive across to Howard Franklin, that's part of his responsibility, and I believe that it should be in, in his contract. Vice Mayor Gunnin.
Uh, two things. One, when it comes to the objective list, I would like to hear from...
Kyle.
The interim city manager, because he's currently living in the belly of the beast, and I'd like to know if there's anything we missed here, or based on his experience as a backup for the city manager, if he wants to add anything. And then, obviously, the city citizens, and I'd like to hear from the citizens advisory.
Sure.
If it's on, and...
We can wrap that up in fifteen minutes, then, uh, let's go for it. Kyle?
Yeah, I, I would say, um, you didn't really miss anything. Uh, maybe dive right into the job description and, and have requirements or... Just to make sure that they're keeping up with all aspects of, of the job. Um, and not dialing too much into this outside stuff that... I mean, make sure they're taking care of what they need to take care of in the job itself. Um, and then, and then you got all this outside stuff that, um, that you're willing to, just to make sure that the, the general day-to-day operations are, some way to measure that.
Thank you. We have anyone on the Citizens Advisory Committee that would like to speak? No. Citizens. Back to the council. Mike Zabel.
Yes, sir. Um, yeah, going back to it, I'd like to, obviously, let's go with the one forty K max. Um, but do the approach, um, that Councilman Roberts said exactly. You know, just leave it open and then see where it proceeds from there. And, uh, if we're behind, we recommend it. Thank you very much, Councilman Roberts.
Great job. Any other comments?
I'm just saying, keep that termination, separation agreement, you know, as minimal as possible. Like, if you say that's standard in the industry, fine, but let's kind of tie it back to a probationary period, that if it's within X amount of days, there's not, there's no, you know, so, you know, comparing it to what I'm seeing on Lynn's agreement, it was pretty, yeah, pretty, oh, it looks like Lynn negotiated it or wrote it or something, or something, so.
We don't want to set a precedence, or a bad precedence, but you, you understand all that. Uh, Councilmember Baker, I see your hand is up.
Does it honor the city charter discussing, uh, the city manager's position? That if he is an abroan employee, can be terminated, but he has the right to review by council?
Yes.
Yes. Um, so, how much more minimal can it be than that?
I would say, just as, as the council to the, as legal counsel to the council, um, yes, that is the most minimal. And, and there are situations where parties have left their legal expectations to the minimal text of their charter. It creates a lot of questions when things don't go precisely as planned. Um, and, and then people say, well, it was always my understanding that. And every, nobody's understanding seems to align. So the benefit of any contract is establishing shared expectations through that process. And while we don't need to deal with every eventuality, setting forth what the, what those parameters are is, in my advice, the most prudent way to proceed, especially having seen and worked through a two-year period in one community, or what they're four and five managers, and having contracts that were reviewed and improved with each version of how that went sideways was most helpful.
Thank you very much. Uh, at this point, are we all in agreement that this is the direction we want to go? To let city attorney take control and see what kind of a deal he can work out for us? Can we do with that?
We need a motion for that.
No motion.
No motion necessary. I think I have the general consensus direction of the body, um, understanding not every person may agree to every single term unanimously. I think I have sufficient direction to engage in discussions with the candidate, and I do have their phone number. Again, I spoke earlier today. And depending on when we adjourn tonight, I may call him this evening or at least tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Um, we have about ten minutes till the next meeting. I'm sure everyone would like a short break. So, uh, we do need a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.